I'll rise please.
The July of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Full call. Meeting is being recorded.
Mr. Bahu?
Here.
Mr. Lemay, Mr. Booton?
I'm here.
Mr. Tatsias?
Here.
Mr. Gigi?
Here.
Mr. O'Hair?
Here.
Mr. Espinola, Mr. Morin.
Yes. Mr. Booton, has anyone signed up for public appearance?
Mr. Chairman, nobody has signed up to speak in the public appearance section.
Okay, thank you. School Committee Communications, Nada. Part of the student representative Gabriel, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. From March 5th through March 27th, the National Technical Honors Society has been coordinating a school-wide food collection for an organization called N68 Hours of Hunger. Based in Drakett, the nonprofit organization is dedicated to eliminating the 68 hours of food deprivation that some students experience between their Friday school lunch and Monday school breakfast. All the math instructors at GL Tech have agreed to award their students with homework passes to increase the non-perishable food collected in their classes. The National Technical Honors Society volunteers have been working diligently after school to visit each collection area, tally the food, and package the items for distribution. All the food collected at GL Tech will be delivered next week. Senior class is selling prom tickets after school from March 20th until March 29th by the bank. Senior prom will be held May 11th at the Boxborough Regency. And the theme this year is Met Gala: A Red Carpet Affair. Drama Club continues to working with carpentry and painting and design to create props for their show Sandbags, Stage Left, or One Dead Dolly. There will be two shows held in the evening on May 4th and 5th, 2018. They ran a successful Tupperware fundraiser and thank everyone who contributed. The outing club is scheduled to go rock climbing on April 6th, 2018. Fifty-one students from the freshman and sophomore class attended the movies after school with Danielle Alexandra, Alexander, this past week. The math club is holding a math meet here at Great Lowell during the first week in May. All the while, the yearbook club completed their senior superlative nominations. Seniors will soon be voting and information will be sent out asking students to verify their portrait selection for the yearbook. The committee continues to work on the yearbook after school. As for athletics, the return of Griffin indoor track was a great success. Over 40 athletes participated with several qualifying for MIAA state competition. Both boys' and girls' basketball had great moments during their respective seasons. Both teams qualified for MIAA tournament play with the girls advancing to the quarterfinal round. Both teams will also return a number of experienced players next season and look to continue their winning traditions. The swim and dive team had another tremendous run of success with only one loss in dual meet competition and finishing second at state vocational meet. Several athletes also qualified for the D2 state meet. Griffin wrestling once again tackled the toughest season schedule for any program around. The result was as usual outstanding with the team finishing top four at the state vocational and D2 regional meets, as well as top 10 at the MIAA state meet. The team also had an impressive seven place, seven first-place winners at the D2 North Regional, three-place winners at the D2 state meet, including a state champion, and qualified two wrestlers for the New England Championship Meet. Lastly, our Griffin cheer team continued to build of their successful full campaign, fall campaign, capturing the D1 North Regional Title on March 4th and placing fifth at the D1 state meet. The team also qualified for the prestigious New England Competition where they placed seventh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Great news, thanks Gabriel. Thank you.
Approval of the minutes, uh, February 15th, 2018. Mr. Booton.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Here.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Morin? Uh, approv, uh, report of the treasurer, approval of the warrants. Mr. Booton.
Motion to waive the reading.
Second by Mr. Tatsias, Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay? Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes. Motion to approve the expenditures for the sum of $3,276,264.76.
So move.
Gigi.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay? Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias? Yes. Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes. Report of General Counsel.
Good evening, Mike. Good evening, members of the committee. Thank you. Briefly, with respect to the conversation that's been ongoing with the Secretary of State's office about the, um, appearance on the state ballot, um, you have in front of you a copy of some communication between Ms. Tasanari and I. We will get to her what, uh, what she needs. She has told me that what we have provided to date looks fine, needs to be tweaked in a couple of areas, but I'll get it cleaned up and out to her well before the April 15th deadline. It'll either go out tomorrow or Monday so that the, uh, the process for putting the ballot together will be complete well in advance.
Why are we doing anything? Shouldn't it be, um, upon the people who have decided that this is the way we should do it, them to figure out what we should be doing?
So if I were to interpret that-
So we're actually entering into handedly, um, a lawsuit that was filed against us?
So there was a consent decree, Mr. Espinosa, that requires that we reconfigure and readjust the process for electing members to the committee and that those, and that the election occur on the biennial statewide ballot. And that means that we have to identify to the various town clerks what seats on the school committee will be open for the November election. Unfortunately, that means that by April 15th, we need to notify the Secretary of State's office as to what our ballot will look like. And the clerk of the committee, who I believe it may be Mr. Bahu, simply has to certify that these are the slots that are open, here's the information. And it is pretty much a ministerial function. It's kind of a process, the paper. So I, I think if I, what I, how I interpret your question is really, since this school committee didn't initiate the litigation, why is this school committee bearing the burden of chasing the paper?
Absolutely, 100%.
So my response to that would be is we have an obligation under the consent decree to conduct ourselves in a certain way. And the fact that others may have initiated the legislation or the litigation for their own purposes doesn't mean that we do not have to fulfill our obligations under the consent decree.
So there are dates that are provided in the consent decree that, um, give us due diligence?
There is a date in, under the, the state election laws, ballots have to be prepared by April 15th.
So now you just, you just skirted the consent decree to the statewide election laws. So, again, which brings me back to my question, are we helping these, uh, fortify the lawsuit? The consent decree, does it say to us that we have to do this or we just fulfilling the, um, the requirements of the state law elections?
So the dissent decree says that we will do this on the state ballot every two years. Issue number one. Issue number two is, okay, well, what's the state ballot process? And under the state statutes and according to the Secretary of State's office, we have to present them with a sample ballot, so to speak, by April 15th. So we are, we are doing what we need to do, not what anybody else should be doing.
I have two questions.
Okay.
The state office holders are already gathering signatures at this point? Does that make it a little late for anybody who's going to be running?
Uh, not according, not according to Ms. Tasanari. She indicates that nomination papers for regional school district candidates must be submitted by 5:00 PM on July 24th. So there is plenty of time for folks to decide what-
That's a law? Because I know to get on the ballot for the November election, you have to have it by May 8th, I believe it is, all year election certified and whatever. So when you say that for Great Lowell School Committee, for school committee to be on it, did they change those dates or?
I'm just telling you what she's told me, Mr. Espinosa.
As it's known, we don't have a primary. The reason why those had to be in sooner is because those are primary.
So the dates-
The Democratic primary, September 4th or 5th, we're not having a primary. This is a non-Democrat, nonpartisan election, so we're skipping over that. I think that's why you would have the 24th. I'm just guessing, but that might be why we're getting more time.
I just, like, you have to have your nomination papers in for the November election way before July for the regular election. So there is a different, there's a different date for school committee for Great Lowell?
That's what she's telling me.
Okay.
So my second question was, this here, the sample that you gave us, that you're, you're providing them a ballot. If somebody's not running for the position, the seat, I know you commented one of our members may not submit papers. Does that give an opportunity? This is just a blank ballot of what to do and they can still pull papers?
Yes.
So the seat can be?
Yes. And in fact, the sample ballot will be corrected by the deletion of the names of these members, the members that are already on the committee. According to Ms. Tasanari, uh, this, the, the blank ballot is provided to the town and city clerks and that only after somebody submits nomination papers would their names be added to the ballot.
Hey, Mr. Long, I'm not, like, questioning what you're saying, but I just want to make sure that this process is what the state and the litigants want to happen because I don't want to have any problems other than, because it seems to me right now, people are asking me, what do I have to do to pull my papers, one of that, and I have a big question mark on my face. I don't know. I don't even know.
My town clerk doesn't know.
Anybody on this, on this board, if they know what they, they should be doing to run for office again, if they know, God bless them. I just think that it's a circus right now and, um, I'm just hoping that they make sure that they do what they, because I don't want to be next year, after we have these elections, having a lawsuit by a, um, a resident of one of the communities that would've had of, wanted to, didn't, whatever, run and, and have a big deal. So it's nothing against you. I know what you're up against because nobody knows the answers.
So, uh, if it's helpful, maybe some of this should be, could be publicized on the school district website as, as just a piece of information for people. I think, um, as far as the state is concerned, uh, I think Ms. Tasanari is outlining some information here that is helpful to the public. And I said I will get her the revisions that she's requested and I'm assuming at that point that she will, and the state will prepare the ballots as they always do.
Uh, Mr. Long, quick, quick question. Does this apply to other regional districts too?
Actually, well, the short answer is yes, Mr. Morin. Actually, she sent me samples of a number of ballots from other regional school districts. And it appears that, that when there are, um, changes to the electoral process and when people go on the biennial election ballot, they all have to comply with this process and, and these dates.
Do they know that?
Um, they said there were several samples, so I have a feeling this is, this is something that is happening as people amend their regional agreements.
As a follow-up to, Mr. Sanari's question-
Mr. O'Hair, did you have a question?
As a follow-up to that question, are those regional districts on the same dates?
If they're on the state ballot, yes.
Okay.
Mr. O'Hair, did you have a question?
Yeah, I, I kind of followed the trail of what was happening on this thing because I didn't think there was a lot of action going on. And went to the Election Commission, I was told what the status was, the Election Commissioner was taken out of that loop. And most of the work was done by the, uh, the State Department. And the same thing with the city clerk, he was, I always thought it was going to be the city clerk and the, and the election commissioner in Lowell that were going to handle this thing, but that, that isn't the way it turned out to be. And this is, this is the first time I've seen this paper and it's, you know, I, I think there's 90% more information on this than, than we have been listening to for the past year on how this was going to take place. It's, you know, it is a short timeframe, but still, you know, it's, right now it's the best, at least we know when we have to get papers in.
Are you running in November?
Yes, I am.
You're on, you're on this election?
I will be on the election. They haven't printed anything yet. But, you know, without, God, making a waiver and getting rid of me, you know?
I'm just wondering, I don't know who's on it or who's not on it or, um, I'll have to read that Gmail that, um, Mr. Bahu keeps flipping into my face. So I'll catch up-
Just a second, Parry.
Yeah, I'll catch up with that later. Um, it was something that, it wasn't made privy to me that if, who was up and, because, um, as everybody knows, I'm not running again. So my seat will be available and I want to let people know because I want to get some people here that would support the school and its endeavors going forward. And right now, me, I couldn't tell you what the deadlines are and, uh, how you have to move forward. And I guess this Gmail thing should take care of it all.
Yeah, if I could, if I could just jump in for a second, we've been listening to, I've been listening to, when, when, when is this going on the ballot? You know, what, what month, whatever? And I, we never got a, we never got a, a good answer for that until, uh, Tony Long came and I think this is, this is more, I think this is more information. I got bits and pieces because I was talking to the people at Lowell City Hall. And, but I think this is, gives us a lot more definition of what's, what is going to take place.
Thank you, Mr. O'Hair. Mr. Bahu, you had a question?
Yep, yep. So, Mr. Long, you're going to draft a letter, I'm the clerk, you're going to somehow get it to me via email and I will go ahead and sign it?
Mm-hmm.
And will I then email it back to you?
Uh, I think-
As a dot loop? Or am I going to sort of send it to the school, have the school mail it to your office and then you mail out to the state?
I, I will send you self-addressed stamped envelopes, just return it directly to me, Fred.
Okay.
And then, um, I'll get it off to her.
Great, because we are doing, I mean-
Right.
We're talking about snail mail here.
I know.
I guess, uh, March 26th comes pretty quick and then it'll be April 1st, it'll be Easter Sunday and-
Right.
By the time I get it and send it back, it's going to be that close, so, thank you.
Give your kudos, Mr. Long, cleaning up the mess for the people that have sued us. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Imagine how much better the school-
Any, any other, any other question?
Big difference. I, I do have other business that I think, uh, under the executive session, uh, um, Mr. Metrocaller and I-
Take it out of water now, put it in later.
Thank you.
Uh, report of the superintendent director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we go to the packet, I wanted to outline a document in front of you. It's, it's titled memorandum. This is a memorandum highlighting some of the information from our very successful Skills USA District Conference, which we held last Thursday here on site. We had 203 student participants and competitors for an outstanding event. Proud to announce that 71 students received medallions. That's the highest number in the history of our school. Of those students, 46 will be representing us at the state conference and technical events at the end of April. We also have one competitor who qualified for the state executive council. You can see in the memorandum, some of the different competitors, names, the place, where they competed in, the vocational program and such. I also want to mention that we swept the competition in a few fails. Additive manufacturing, computer programming, inter-networking, welding, and welding sculpture. This was a great event for me, being my first time witnessing this. I want to thank Ms. Davis, who did a lot of organization, Sharon Cornelia, who's our Skills USA advisor, Valerie Branco, who's our interim student activities coordinator, Mr. Costa, who is our site coordinator, and for the many, many staff members who attended this event, but also prepared our students for the competition. We wish our 46 competitors well. We're going to need a bigger bus, I think, compared to last year. And we look forward to a great event at the end of our, um, April.
Congratulations.
Okay, thank you.
In your packet, there are two items. The first item is our monthly cooperative education report. It was a request to have our cooperative education director, co-op director, Mr. Zanzin, come and maybe highlight some trends and some, uh, pieces of the numbers that may be interesting to us. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. So I think some of you have the February report. So right now, compared to last year, um, I actually, um, added another column, so hopefully going forward next month, you'll be able to see a snapshot of number of placements compared from last year to current year, um, that will, in addition to the percentages. But compared to last year, we have one, we're up one placement from February of 17 to February of 18 with 183 seniors on co-op. On the junior report, we're up seven placements. We had 30 juniors on co-op at the end of February 2017. We have 37 at the end of Feb- February 2018. Specific questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Booton?
I, I have a report, a request for a report to get some more detail to the, to the group, a presentation, how we're, we're taking care of our co-ops, what we're doing to get more, um, places for our students to go to co-op, how we're, um, how we've worked in the past, are we doing any type of surveys, things like that? It's a little bit informative and things, but, um, is there one thing we can do? I mean, as I look through, I go to the last column.
Yeah.
Students who want co-op and have licenses. Because I understand that's our, our biggest issue, getting kids out on co-op is having that transportation, um, with a car and a license. So-
That's right.
Is there anything that is weak right now that us as a board can make phone calls or meet somebody out there and say? I mean-
You mean specific-
Specific categories?
Yeah.
I mean, there's five, they're looking for HVAC five?
So I'm in the process of placing some of those now. I have, um, some company's students are going on interviews and in the process of placing some of those seniors right now. So hopefully that number will be different over the next month or two. We'll see, um, more, more HVAC students out.
Do we have any, I, I think it was three, four years ago, we had a company that was, the students would take the bus here, um, the company would come pick them up. Uh, one was, I think, the, um, hotel at exit one, but, well, we used to transport them up there. But a manufacturing company, I thought, or a sheet metal company-
Yep, it was in Pepperell. Unfortunately, that, it's changed management and it's a new owner. Uh, we do still partner with them, but they do no, no longer provide that transportation option.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
But as far as new businesses, I mean, I do have a list of some new businesses if you want to see them.
No, I, I was actually looking for, is there something we can do as a committee? I was here with you, you, you came and met with myself, the superintendent, and some people from the local laborers union, which are going to help with-
Oh, yes.
Masonry, um, painting and, and just labors, so.
I would say designing visuals.
I know you're meeting with people, but is there other things we can do? Is there some sort of hot? I see HVAC has five openings. Is it worth a request to the members of the committee or something to say, this is what we're looking for? How, how can we help you get more kids out on co-op?
Mr. Booton, excuse me. I'm going to have to go into the, um, public hearing, part of the meeting.
We have to suspend the-
Perhaps you could come back.
Okay.
Is that all right?
Sure.
Sounds perfect. Sounds like something we have on our agenda.
Yeah, I just-
Sure.
She can stay right there.
You can stay. It's all right.
Oh, okay.
All right. Motion to recess the regular meeting. Mr. Booton, Mr. Gigi, Mr. Bahu, somebody, I don't know.
Um, Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay? Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes. All the meeting terminated.
Motion to open the public meeting?
Motion to open the public meeting.
By Mr. Booton, secondly.
Mr. Gigi.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay? Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes. Anyone in the audience, uh, Mr. Booton?
Nobody is registered to speak?
Wishing to speak on the-
Nobody is registered to speak on the budget?
On the fiscal 19 budget, huh? Okay. Motion to clo- motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Tatsias?
Mr. Espinola?
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay? Mr. Booton? Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
So you can continue on with the meeting. No, we're going to continue on with the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, so that's done.
Okay. All right. We'll re-enter.
We're going to have to pass the budget.
Well, you want to just let her finish and then we can approve the budget?
It's under Billy Joe's stuff.
Let her finish first. Okay. Thank you, welcome back.
Thank you, thank you again for having me. Um, so I think some of the areas, I will say that, um, I've had some challenges and it would be the design of visual. Across the state, I've pulled data from, um, last year from the state and it's not only our school that has struggles with placing the design of visual students, it's pretty much statewide. Um, I've looked at all of the co-op numbers across the state for that specific program and I think that's definitely more of an academic program that requires a college degree. So we get a couple of placements, but it's a little bit harder to get, you know, 20 placements or 10 placements. So I know, um, that's one area that I'm constantly looking to improve and it's a little more challenging, um, but we do, I work closely with the shop instructor to try to find different places.
Thank you.
Mr. Espinola?
So, uh, Ms. Bezanzas, uh, um, with the design of visual communications, um, so obviously we're having trouble filling it and we have six and, uh, there are other people having trouble filling it as well. So, um, is this something that we can do, uh, to improve that or is there more communications that we could get out there to the people that, um, I mean, obviously, um, the employer is going to get something out of it.
Right.
I wasn't drafted when I went to the school and I was placed and I worked on a number of things that, um, needed to have a, an engineering degree.
Yes.
But I still worked on those things and, um, the employers, and we're not talking about your local level, we're talking about national level, federal government employees, Sanders, AVCO, Textron, uh, places like that, that I worked at Honeywell. Do they understand the, the benefit of, of just having the kids come and just do something for them? Because maybe some of the people that are in, at level, that they have in placement, some of our kids could take care of their, um, mundane and monotonous type-
Yes.
Things and it's a mutual, um, benefit for- And it's a mutual benefit for the company and for our kids to get them out there. Do you talk to those companies and they just say, no, we don't want anybody?
So what I try to do is leverage off of some of the companies we already have partnerships with. So when I go out for site visits for some, for the programs we have, I try to expand them in other departments. And that's where I have been fortunate enough to find some placements for our design of visual students, is with current employers that they're hiring students in a different department. And then trying to get them into that marketing section or the design section of their company. So that is one strategy that I have tried to use. And I've been able to get between last year and this year, like, three or four placements using that strategy.
It just seems to me, we're not talking electricians, carpenters, and things like that, with something like this, it's a bargain for the company to have these design visual people come in at an entry level minus than to hire someone out of college. So maybe we need to just spend some more time looking at other.
Sure.
If we're not successful with the companies that we're working with now, maybe we can, because they can honestly say to you, once you get that company, they're gonna say, this is fantastic.
Yes.
I don't know why I haven't done this before. And then the other people are gonna be saying, well, what about me? I want my people, you told us no, and we're gonna go with the people that are telling us yes.
Right, yeah.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to jump in. Ms. Bezanzin, you, as you know, one of the goals that we've had as administrative team is to obviously increase co-op opportunities back in August. One of the things we talked about as a team, to meet with the cluster leaders on a normal basis, a monthly basis, which you've been doing, thank you. You've identified a whole host of new partners.
Yes.
Over the past six months. Can you share that with us? I think that'd be something that would be valuable for the committee members to see. They might even identify some of them. I know this is just a reference point, but you have seeked out a lot of them. And I think it's important for us to know that. Is there a document for all of us?
So it's two-sided, I have it broken down by program. So over the course of, since September, I've identified all the new employers or new departments, which, that's what I was talking about a little bit before. If we already have a partnership with a company, have I been able to get other students in there in a different department? So since September, I've been able to work, broken down by each shop, and I listed out the employers. So, I'll take a look.
Regarding the design, because that's what we're talking about.
Sure.
What is an entry level position? What would that entail? What could one of our students do so that I know, and maybe I can get the word out? I guess I'm not familiar with what a entry level less than college grad would do in design. Now, I'm hearing from Mr. Espinola over here, process mail data, design a slight. Could you help me with that so that I can maybe pass it on?
There's a couple of different sides to it. So they have the fine art side to it, where they do the drawings. But the technical side would be using a lot of the Adobe products, where we've had students design the boxes that the items go into, like whatever they're selling or making, they have to be in certain boxes. And they've designed that, like the logo and just the different shapes and the design side of it. So they do have the ability to do the computer side of the design. And they have all sorts of experience with all the Adobe products.
So doing the basic level of design our students are qualified to do?
Yes, basic design, yep.
Okay, and then how do we get that into the business application? Because it sounds like that might be a level for the students to start at, is designing it. And then they move up into the marketing, the businesses, producing it at a different level.
Sure, I mean, we've had students work at Deluxe last year. We were trying to get back into Deluxe. I don't know if you know Deluxe? Yeah, yep. And they were working on, you know, designing like the checks and, you know, doing all the design orders from there, which was a really neat opportunity last year. Unfortunately, we haven't been able to get back in because of the demand, that they just don't have the demand as of right now. So like I said, there's a few placements we have. We have a student starting in two weeks at a company, where we've had students there in a different program, and I'm trying to get them into the design program. So we will have a couple of placements, but a lot of them prepare for college. Like, they prepare, they spend the year preparing their portfolio to present to colleges, to art colleges, and they go to art school. So that's what some of the kids focus on. So some of them want co-op, some of them don't.
So is that more the creative side? Or is that the application, taking the computer and putting that creation onto the computer and then fast-producing it? So I'm trying to.
Yeah, they do both. So they have the drawing side, but then they also have the computer side. So they have the fine arts as well.
So does our program kind of tailor them towards the creative side more than the computer application? I'm hearing you say we do have the computer application.
We do, absolutely, yes. So our students can absolutely use those, use, that's basically what they get hired to do, is use the applications to design.
If the company has a creation, or they have an ad campaign, or a design for the box, can our students go there if they're given that design and put it on the computer for the employer?
They should be able to.
They should be able to, okay.
Mr. Joyad, do you have a question?
Thank you.
Did you have a question?
No, I'm all set. I've got a couple of questions, but I'll do that later.
Ms. Bezanzin, I just want to thank you for coming here. We are a vocational school. We hear a lot about academics, we hear a lot about policy, we hear a lot about budgets, we hear a lot about our special education, and lunches, and all these programs, and we've never had the benefit. And we always have this, you know, great rapport from co-op, and what you can do for us, and what you have done for our students. But, you know, we've never got to meet with you. So I knew there would be a lot of questions.
Sure.
By the school committee. So more than anything, just thank you for showing up and sharing this information with us.
I actually had the opportunity to be on TV with her.
Yes.
Oh, you're gonna get off the wall.
Okay, terrific, I guess I don't watch the television program. I'll have to watch that show.
He's too busy reading Gmail.
So anyway, I believe, I think the first thing, maybe as a school committee member, and I have participated in co-op by running my own business a number of years ago, just to inform the school committee, as well as the listening audiences out there, how is it that we solicit businesses?
So we do it a couple of different ways. So I have a standing relationship with quite a few companies, well over a hundred, that will reach out to either myself or the shop instructors. And we reach out to them each year to see if they're interested in co-op, if they have co-op opportunities. We also, I work closely with the shop instructors, because they're the closest ones to the field. When we have certain students, if I don't have a placement, I'll ask them if they know of any places. The students sometimes have connections, so I'll go through them as well. We have, I talk to different schools, sometimes we job-share with different schools. So they, we can pick up an opposite week to some schools that can't produce both weeks. Sometimes when I'm driving around to job sites, I'll find a company and take a picture of it and call when I get home, you know, not home, but back to school, kind of like my home. And call them to see, you know, if they're hiring, especially if we're looking for, you know, electronics. Like, if I know that there's students looking for a specific job, I'll try to call them specifically and try to do it that way.
Great, and how do we get word out? Because I know, you know, I've stopped at businesses, I've stopped at, you know, whatever you want to call it, small restaurants and said, hey, do you realize, you know, over at Grade Low Tech, we have, you know, students that are in culinary, and they have all the state-of-the-art equipment, and they could be available to work for you guys. And, you know, we could send two different students here, and it could be a real benefit to you. So how are we getting word out, other than, you know, each one of our school committee members, and maybe the superintendent, or whoever wants to talk about it, talks about it? But, you know, is there like a piece of mail that goes out? Is there some advertising on the show that maybe Joe was on with you?
I've been to a couple, and we've hosted the Rotary Club of Lowell here. I've been to BNI, I've been to the Web. So I try to, Career Center of Lowell, we have a relationship with. So I try to work with some of those groups to try to get the word out as well. Depending on the program, some programs don't really need as much advertising, but other programs, I know we sent out for hospitality, it might have been two or three years ago, we sent a bunch of letters out to all the hotels in the area.
Okay, so, well, I guess, is there something more that we could do to sort of get the word out? You know, whether it's print advertisement, or whether it's Facebook, or whether it's on our own webpage, where people would say, hey, co-op opportunities, let's sort of grab on that?
Sure.
I'm not entirely sure, because I think we have the best school in all of Massachusetts, personally speaking.
Well, I know other schools have a jobs board, so they use social media to promote a jobs board, where companies can contact the office and ask to post jobs. And so it goes out using social media, like, there's a platform of it. There's a couple of schools piloting it now at the state level, at other schools that I work with. So I'm kind of seeing how that goes for some of them, before I did any sort of proposal to anyone.
Okay.
But that's something that could be something we, you know, may look into, that I may request to look into in the future, in the near future. Because I think getting out on the social media and having companies interact with me that way is very helpful.
Sure, and I think, you know, moving forward, would love to have, you know, the co-op director here at our school committee meetings, you know, every now and then, just because I think there's lots of questions to be asked and such like that. And I think I want to just ask one last question.
Sure.
How is it that you get feedback from our employers about our students?
Oh, weekly?
Weekly, monthly, maybe when the job term comes, you know, completed. Maybe if the students, maybe how the students are performing there and such like that.
So we get, the students do weekly time cards, so it tracks their attendance as well as how they're doing. So each week, they turn in a report to the shop teacher, as well as the co-op office. And then twice a year, we send out a midterm and a final evaluation. It's a little bit more of a detailed evaluation. So we send that out and get it back, and that goes to myself and the instructors. In addition to that, I do some site visits. So whenever I go to sites, I will get feedback when I'm doing site visits as well. And then they call me and/or email me.
Great, so it seems to work out well.
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
How do you pair a student?
Thank you, Mr. Bahu.
And the employer?
Sure.
Is there any criteria? Sometimes I've heard from employers that have had students, and they were dissatisfied. And I've heard of students who didn't care for their, you know, their place of employment.
So I rely heavily on the shop instructors and the theory instructors, because they know the students the best? So when a job comes in, I ask the instructors for recommendations. So I get some information from the employer, what they're looking for, whether it's hours, you know, some employers will accommodate sports, some won't. Some of the hours will accommodate students, some won't. And we try to pair them up that way. And then there's an interview process. So pretty much ninety-nine percent of the students go on interviews. So they meet the employer, and the employer meets the students before they're hired. So the employers are making those selections.
Oh, okay, it's not blind?
No, no. I try to discourage us just picking students and sending them out. I like to really make sure that the employer has an opportunity to interview them before they start. And that way, the student also has an opportunity to meet the employer and see where they're working ahead of time.
Okay, they don't go in without any expectations. The student should know what's basically expected of them.
Sure, absolutely, yes. So that's how the interview really helps. Because during the interview, the employer will obviously ask some, your standard interview questions, but also explain to them what the job is and what their expectations are.
Joyad?
Yeah, just two items. I think it was a couple of years ago, someone pointed out a company was just over the line in New Hampshire. And I believe it was a Raytheon at one time, and it has another name at this point, but they were hiring a lot of students from Grade Low. And I was wondering if that still exists. The other piece is that there are some others that are looking for, but is transportation a major problem, again, getting the kids from point A to point B?
It depends on where the company's located and what program they're in.
Yeah.
So your answer to your first question, BAE, we are.
Yes, that's exactly, yes.
Yep, so we have nine students placed at BAE as of right now. We have all different departments. We have engineering, CAD, auto body, and electronics. And I'm working on more placements as we speak.
Auto body?
Yes, so it's a really, really neat job. I'm like, super excited about this one job.
If I could jump in right here, but I understand a lot of those, they want to keep those kids for further employment.
Absolutely, so some of the jobs, some of them we have placed juniors in. So we'll see how that turns out, because it's still about a year and a half away till they graduate. Some of the engineering students, they will be going to college, so that's sort of what they tend to do, at least that's the track. But I think the plan for electronics and auto body, the goal would be for them to stay on after graduation.
Good.
Mr. Chairman? Could you say two things?
Okay, go ahead.
This is phenomenal, absolutely amazing, two sides, all the just new employers, not including the existing ones, so blown away by this. I mean, that is a lot of new places to send our students. On another note, my son was a student here. I know how involved you were with all the students, you know, his friends, you dealing with the employers, any issues that needed to be resolved, or to help the kids and make sure the students are actually learning at these positions. It's not just like, go there, work, and not, you're making sure it's tied into the school. So I want to thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Nice job.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Come back again.
Next item on the agenda is the two thousand eighteen-nineteen school committee meeting scheduled for your review and or approval.
Chairman? I, just one question. I didn't know if possibly the January seventeenth meeting can be moved. I'm leaving that night for, it's a long weekend, so obviously I'll be away.
That's Mountain of the King Weekend.
Hopefully, excuse me?
Mountain of the King Weekend, or?
Yes.
So seventeen, I didn't really look at the calendar.
If we could do the tenth, it's four and a half weeks away from the December meeting. And February is always an earlier meeting, because we do it the week before school vacation. So it seems many of our days are happening the second Thursday, and that would just be moving the January meeting to the second Thursday instead of the third.
Let's move it.
Thank you.
I don't think it's a.
Let's move it, I'll make a move.
Move it to what date?
Second week.
I think the tenth would be, unless there's something on the school calendar that would conflict with it.
Well, we do this, that's why we do this before the school calendar.
The next meeting would only be thirty days later anyway.
Right.
And I have a couple of requests. I do.
Then I'm gonna ask if we could move Valentine's Day because of a romantic.
January tenth?
January tenth, please.
Right, and I'm looking to move the August date. I know that, you know, we're coming back to school and such like that. I'm just hoping that we could move it to maybe the fourth Thursday of the month, because that Thursday comes up like on the second that year, that people still could be vacationing and such like that. So I don't know that it's gonna make a big difference when we're on our very light-scheduled August meeting.
August twenty-three.
Right, and then lastly, I'm gonna request, like, we hear March twenty-second today. Is today March twenty-second, March twenty-third? March twenty-second. I'm thinking, you know, this went pretty smoothly to pass the budget and stuff, because we have some subcommittee meetings, and generally, we have an extra meeting to pass the budget. So I'm thinking we may have. I'm thinking we, well, it's listed here as the fourteenth.
Right, but the twenty-first would be where you want to move it to?
That would, yes, yes. If that would be possible, strictly because, you know, we may be able to kill two birds with one stone, have a school committee meeting, as well as pass our budget.
So we move that meeting to January seventeenth?
It's gonna be sad, sir. It's gonna be sad, sir. Unfortunately, you're not gonna be here. And I may not be either.
So change August sixteen to the twenty-third, January seventeenth to January ten, March fourteenth to the twenty-first.
Is the August meeting when we, um, vote on the school policies? And do they have to make copies of those, Ms. Davis?
No, we do that before that.
Just in June?
Yeah, we, yeah, we do that before.
At one point, it was done in August, but we moved it.
Like the student handbook you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, the handbook, the calendar.
We had to vote on it early to get it printed.
All that stuff is like, yeah, June or something.
I think our assistant superintendent really jumped on top of that and made sure we were getting that done in June prior.
We were slacking.
Great work, Ms. Davis.
Fantastic.
It's like this year, we had the meeting that same August, like, twenty-fourth or whatever that full week was.
Right.
This year, we did it at the same time.
Okay.
Move to approve the, um, schedule of two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen as revised, Mr. Chairman?
And I, and I, and I might add, I will be here, because my term doesn't end up until January first.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay, Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatius?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes. Thank you. Order the business management. Uh, public hearing on, uh, yeah, so, so...
We're actually going to vote on the budget tonight?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
There's all changes from the last meeting, right?
Mm-hmm.
So it's forty-four, could you read me the number, please?
Forty-four, zero-nine-zero-nine-six-zero.
Thank you. Mr. Espinola, second agenda. Mr. Bahu? Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay, Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatius? Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes. Now, sir?
Thank you.
Uh, old business?
Old business?
No.
Old business?
No.
Okay, uh, new business?
New business.
Yeah. As you're aware, we have, uh, to solicit for a new legal counsel. I put together a legal search, subcommittee, compromise of Mr. Giggie, Mr. Booton, and myself, and I suggest we talk after tonight's meeting to set a date time and to convene a subcommittee to set the guidelines, is that's okay with you guys?
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, and it's, uh, reorg?
Okay. We need a nomination for chairman.
Sure, uh, we have a, I guess, reorg, and I'd like to nominate, uh, Mr. Espinola for our chairman for two thousand, for the next cycle, effective April one, two thousand and eighteen, through March thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen.
Second by Mr. Tatius.
And I accept.
Okay.
We have to vote for you, believe it or not.
Any other nominations?
No.
Okay, so we have to vote, so if you could take yours and pass them down? If you could take yours, or Jill, if you could, your, please? So he's absent.
Hey, man, George Tatius?
I got Ray Booton's.
Oh.
Silence.
Can I have that? Do you want to sign it for me too?
You got mine for me.
Who has yours?
You could have filled it in.
I started to, but...
So Mr. Tatius, do you have Mr., oh, he had two.
Maybe I didn't pass them in the correct order.
No, you did.
Maybe I had them mixed up.
It's definitely my fault.
No, I probably...
George O'Hare?
We have Georges?
Left out again.
When you come from grade low...
George O'Hare?
It's usually called as, there's always one.
No, I gave Mr. Tatius his.
Yeah.
And where's Mr. O'Hare's?
That's what we're asking you.
Hi.
It was in the stack.
Is that O'Hare, or is that Tatius on that one, on the bottom?
First Tatius.
You were two.
Did you spell it right?
But he had one, I gave two, too.
Oh, H, H. That's mine.
Let's just make a new one up for Mr. O'Hare.
It was behind it.
We got it right here, George. Let's blame the secretary.
No, it was, it was...
You know, when I shook it, I said, this is awfully thick, and then nothing fell out of it, no, it was like, I wish I shook it like you did.
Yeah.
It's a secret ballot.
Well, I knew it was there.
It's a secret ballot.
Oh, it is?
It's a big secret.
No, it doesn't...
No, it's not.
Too hard.
Mr. Espinola? Mr. Espinola, Mr. Espinola. All right, so, Mr. Espinola has...
There's one.
One.
Isn't that one mine?
Two. Three, four, five votes for Mr. Espinola, two votes for Mr. Tatius, and one absent. So, Mr. Espinola, you win.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Joe.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Joe.
Oh, my goodness.
I'm supposed to, I forgot my, uh, while I was dressing up, I forgot my sling at home, so I'm paying for it right now, trust me.
Vice chair. Vice chair. Somebody would like to make a nomination for vice chair?
I'll nominate Freddie.
Hi.
Bahu?
Yeah, nominate Fred Bahu, vice chair.
Any other nominations? Okay, so this time, I think you should have them...
Shake them good.
Would you please give Mr. Tatius?
Here's your, he, he...
What do you have, Snowfaret?
I know how to spell it. I'm writing it enough.
Thank you.
Frederick?
I'm gonna vote for Fareed.
Me too.
Wait, that's quite a stupid choice.
I don't want to be followed in the afterlife.
I'll be waiting.
Okay, so, oh my goodness. One, two... Three, four, five for Mr. Bahu, two for Mr. Tatius, one absent.
Catching on.
Mr. Bahu?
Congratulations, Mr. Bahu.
That was a close vote. Holy moly, I was the only guy nominated.
She squealed that one off.
Okay, nomination for...
Thank you for your vote.
For secretary.
I'd like to nominate Curtis Lomé.
Second.
Okay, any other nominations?
Oh, wait a minute, I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
With this automatic, uh, world now...
Mm-hmm.
Should we call Curtis and let him, give him the opportunity to vote?
He has to say he will, he accepted, but he's on the phone right now.
Oh, he is on the phone, okay, good.
Is that him?
That's what Joe just said, yeah. He has to accept it.
All right, so Jill, Jill needs to put him on hold. Jill, can you put him on hold, because we need him?
Can you put him on hold, please?
I was just looking...
Can you put him on hold?
To follow the rules. What do we get here?
You gotta fill Curtis. Let me put his last...
You got, one half of him is on one line, the other half is on the other.
I did, I did, I'm not paying attention.
This goes up...
They know what they're talking about.
Yep.
Curtis, is he gonna accept?
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
We're in the middle of voting for...
Cheerperson, do you want to?
A secretary for the school committee, and they, you are the nominated person. Will you accept the nomination if you win?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna finish voting.
Would you like to vote for yourself, and by proxy, I can sign your name?
Usually wait till after everybody votes.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that doesn't say it, I don't have a bad look at that.
I noticed you called in after they voted for the chair.
I just got back.
Was that planned?
I will proxy.
So, one, two...
What do we got here, these? These are all signed?
Yep.
Two, three.
These all going up to her?
I think so, it's tempting.
Okay, Mr. Lemay, you have, I just double-checked here. Mr. Lemay, you have seven votes, and Mr. Tatius has one.
Whoa, someone dropped out.
I just want you to know that, uh, Mr. Tatius has had two votes on the other two nominations.
And you scared one away, Curtis.
You got five votes tonight.
Okay, so the new... So the new offices will be Mr. Espinola, chair, Mr. Bahu, vice chair, Mr. Lemay, secretary.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, everyone.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you for my colleagues, thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. I did sign them, okay?
Yeah.
Not yet. What a good idea.
Any other new business?
He's in some of these.
Uh, any other new business?
Nope.
And so we go back into, uh...
So what, committee men, committee men motions?
Okay, committee men motions. Motion by Mr. Booton requesting the superintendent report on the cost of the school to be outfitted with additional security measures. This can include additional locks, security cameras, monitoring, physical changes, and or training. Mr. Booton?
Second, we need a second.
Second. Um, I, it's, it speaks for itself, the motion, other than the fact that some of these items maybe needed to be discussed in executive session, which I understand, but with everything that's happened over the last few months, um, I think it's important that we're reprised of additional Alice trainings, um, things we're doing, whether the local police can go on to our security cameras, um, and again, what I say in the, what I have in the motion, so...
All right, uh, Mr. Bah, um, oh, yeah?
Yeah.
No, yeah.
Do I look like Fred? Listen, the, the only, uh, question I have is, uh, within the past two years, we put in a million-dollar, um, security camera and system that you can move, is that gonna replace this, or did we make a bad move on the original one that was put in?
No, I don't think so, I don't think so. I think it'd just be an addition to...
Additional, additional cameras. If anything, we do additional cameras.
All right. Now, do we have a weakness? Well, I don't want to get involved in that, because I think it's a little more secure, you know, so I'm not gonna...
They need to be discussed in a...
I'm not gonna bring anything up on that, but, no, but I just thought, that was all new, and we spent, it was, it was, Saltwood says, oh, this will do everything, but obviously it's, it's not.
I think it's safe to say that the system that we put in place at the time was probably the best system that was available for, because there are other situations that have happened throughout the country, uh, regarding schools, so I would as- I would assume that wherever we want to go forward with our security system would mesh with what we have already in place, and, and, uh, we can add to it.
Where this was so new, it sounded like the state of the art, and did we make a mistake with that, or maybe we're doing something else?
No, I don't, yeah, I don't think so.
Now, is this gonna be an add-on to what we have now?
Perhaps, yeah, perhaps, maybe.
These are just gonna be suggestions that we can change.
Has there ever been a study in what might be the most bang for the buck to proceed with security?
No.
I think the, the, the best way to answer that, I can answer it in the report, when I prepare the report, is to perhaps do a safety audit.
Okay.
Full safety audit, look at best practices, uh, see what we do well, uh, which I can tell you, we do a lot of things well. See what potential, uh, recommendations might come from some national studies, uh, that have come out, obviously taking some of our support from public safety also. Uh, that may be a recommendation coming from Mr. Booton's, uh, motion.
Thanks.
Hello?
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatius? Mr. Giggie?
Yes, definitely.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes. Uh, motion by Mr. Booton, rippers, uh, requesting the superintendent to report on our co-op program, and an emphasis on what we are doing to increase the number of students out on co-op. I didn't just kind of answer that, uh...
No, if somebody can second the motion, I can explain what I'm looking for.
George, I'll hear you second it.
Um, it, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Zanson had more to say. She has much more than what we're doing. I, I'd like to get an idea of what we're doing, analysis based on other, like, Nishoba Tech, Whittier Tech, um, Shawshin, our local competitors, how they're doing, how their strengths are in their different areas. Um, I remember years ago, in a superintendent search, we went down to a place on the South Shore, and they had a handful of kids out, maybe five. We're doing much better, but I'd also like to know what we're doing, but we have all those new employers, and this is amazing list, are we going back to those employees we had five, three to five years ago, or have we not engaged them? Do we still communicate with them? Are we doing mailers? Are we doing emails to them on occasion to remind them where we are? emails to them on occasion to remind them where we are, just something to give us a more comprehensive report of what we're doing beyond what was given to us tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hello?
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes. Motion by Mr. Booton requesting the superintendent provide a report on the admissions process and procedures for this year with comparative data from the past five years, info to be included but not limited to our number of applicants, numbers of initial acceptance, cutoff scores, additional acceptance after testing, and wait lists.
I'll second it. My, my request for this is, I, I feel, um, this has been brought up in the past with everything that's going on, uh, with the construction at our high school, I'm wondering if we're getting to see more students coming here, I'd like to know where they're coming from with a pattern over the last five years, um, and we're, we're gonna need to, uh, be going forward, so if we're seeing that trend go up, and there's more of an increase, I just saw an article today about, um, more and more kids are going out of high schools, so I'd like to see a report, a trend of where we're at, what we've had, what our scores are for the kids we've been accepting, um, so I can see where we've been and where we're going.
Okay.
Thank you.
Could you just read that motion back, just the, the motion, what was it?
Yeah, okay. Motion by Mr. Booton.
It's on your paper.
Requesting the superintendent provide a report on the admissions process and procedures for this year with comparative data from the past five years, info to be included but not limited to our number of applicants, numbers of initial acceptance, cutoff scores, additional acceptance after testing, and wait lists.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.